What are those going forward?
Regular scheduled meeting, Long Star City Council for December 21st, 27th. Dinesbe call to work. Mr. Ryder, would you give the information?
Dear Lloyd, thank you that we can all make it here tonight. And please be with all those who are sick and be with the military and the police and anyone who steps in harm's way to protect the rest of us. And please give us the knowledge and the wisdom to do your work here for the city tonight. Jesus, am I praying? Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a liberal republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, the individual with liberty and justice for all.
Citizens, comments we have. Detective Terrace has signed in. This is somewhat unusual for us. Normally, we wouldn't allow you to speak of anything that's on the agenda. However, I'll make an exception. This time, you have three minutes.
Yes, sir. The bank ordeal, I love the idea of us getting a new building for the police department. I don't like the idea that we're borrowing, like renting a building and then five years they might raise it up sky high or something. And it's not ours. We're spending money. Like, my biggest thing was I spent a lot of personal time on the grants, begging in front of a group of people saying, "We don't have money to buy patrol vehicles." But now, all of a sudden, we have money to rent a building that we're not going to own. And that's just our ordeal. A lot of the PD loves the idea. It's just a lot of money for a building that we're not going to own. That's my, I mean, I wouldn't make a personal, as a citizen, not a politician, I wouldn't make a personal decision to rent something when I know PD's going to be here in 20 years from now, 30 years from now, five years from now. That's all I'm saying.
Four consent items. Minutes of the regular scheduled meeting on May 16th, 27th. Any comments or questions regarding that? Number one, regular.
I move that we accept the minutes of the regular scheduled meeting on November 16th, 27th.
All in favor, say aye. Raise your hand. Any opposed? Reports 5-1 through 5A to A and B. I trust that you've looked through those reports. Thanks to all the staff, we've spent so much time giving us so much detail. Okay, I was looking at your report and I just had a question in my mind popped up. How many tons of trash were hauled off in November?
Yes, sir.
That was November alone?
Yes, sir. We had a fall cleanup in November. It was a one-day process where people could put stuff out by the street. We'd come by and pick it up in a 16-foot trailer. I had, I think I had six community service workers that day. We hauled off, I think, nine, seven or nine trailer loads. We filled two 14-foot roll-off dumpsters up. And then, we also had about seven participants that wanted to bring stuff out there personally and throw away. That doesn't include limbs or trees that were cut up and hauled off. That's just specifically trash. We also separated and recycled all of our metals. No metals went to that also.
So, that was eight to 10 tons?
Yes, sir.
Of debris?
Debris. Trash, mattresses, junk, just cleaning up. Just cleaning up trash.
Just, what would you estimate? What's the tonnage that you called off since you began this?
I can't, do you remember, Devin, what we did in the spring? Was it eight, eight 20-yard dumpsters is what we did in the spring?
We just have no...
It was eight or nine 20-yard dumpsters. Between the fall and the spring cleanup, we probably did somewhere around 25,000. So, what, 10 and a half tons, 11 tons, something like that. So, and every day, people take stuff out there. We're calling for dumpsters now. We were getting one about once every four months. Now, we're up to getting one about once every 20 days. Just with, since we changed orders where people could pay less to cough stuff off, they're taking advantage of it. Starting to really see a difference. I mean, when you drive around the neighborhoods, there's just not trash piled up around houses anymore.
I think I've done standing. Thank you for your efforts there. I was looking at the photos of one residence we had a violation.
I was looking at it too.
Yes.
Is that the same house?
Same house, yes. And he did that voluntarily. He did. I went up, I talked to him, I gave him some options to do with stuff. He wanted to clean up and he took advantage of it and cleaned his property up and did a really good job.
I had to go back and look at the last photo two, three times to make sure I was looking at the same house. It was just tremendous improvement. Are we cleaning up some of the city lots also, some of the over...
All of our city lots are clean. The only one that I keep getting questions about is the one that's beside the, you said your mom's place? What's it called down here?
That's what you call it, Kimbo's?
Kimbo's, okay. I keep getting questions about the lot at Kimbo's. That was a lot where they went in and cut trees off of it illegally. So, there's stumps, there's downed tree limbs. It would cost the city probably $20,000 to go in there and bulldoze that off where I could bush hog it. So, basically, we either spend $20,000 to bush hog the lot to clear the lot off where it can plant grass and bush hog it, or we let it revert back to native habitat. I mean, that's all I can do with it. But any city lot you put a mower on, it's mowed. That includes the city lots on Crockett Street, Alamo Street, Germany Street. I worked endlessly all summer to clean them up and get them where they, just you run over them with a lawnmower. And they're all like that now. Every city lot that's, to my knowledge, we own.
Have you had much feedback from the citizens regarding?
They like it. I mean, I'm getting call after call. We get flooded now. We get, we're starting to get flooded now at City Hall. Actually, the neighbor calls because they cleaned their place up and they want the neighbor to clean their place up. We're just, we're starting to see these calls coming in. And that's just part of the process that's going to happen. So, you know?
You've done this before.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I've been kind of, you know, as we start pushing to the winter and the grass dies off, I get to concentrate more on trash, junk, and debris and junk vehicles. I just got through towing, I think, four cars. I just got rid of four cars that actually had to tow that weren't voluntarily gotten rid of. I probably had another four to five that were voluntarily gotten rid of. So, having pretty good, pretty good luck with that too, so.
That lot you're talking about, that the trees were cut down illegally?
Yes, ma'am.
We never did anything about that, did we? About the person that cut them down?
Who was the person that cut them down in the first place? That's where it's supposed to be learned back to the person that hired the person coming and cut the trees down.
They should have come in and cleaned it up.
Another option we could have with that is to put it on, put it on auction and auction it off, see if somebody's interested in purchasing it to build on.
How large is, is it like, is it four lots? Yeah, obviously.
It's four lots. It's fairly large. But it's just got tree stumps all over it and I walked it. There's no way to bush hog it. There's just too much debris up there to even think about. It's just got to be dozed before you can do anything with it, so.
For all the other things you've done, thank you very much.
No problem.
I make the motion that we accept reports 5-1 through 5A, 5A, A and B as presented.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Six non-action items. 6-1, Economic Development Board Chairman Mitch Coswell brought a report on current upcoming projects of the Economic Development Board. And 6-2, this will also involve Mr. Coswell providing a report on the Long Star Chamber of Commerce. Sorry, you have the floor.
Thank you. I want to make sure you've got your camera on tonight, okay? All right, good. First off, before I give my report, I think it's despicable that what goes on in here, you've got the right to film it, but it's being broadcast all over YouTube. And I'm starting to get phone calls from people that are involved in it, and it's not right. And you're the reason they're doing it.
Public media, right?
I'm not sure. Is it?
Yeah, they are public. This is a public media. So, are they going to know?
What, do you think it's right that what I give information to the council from the EDC is broadcast all over YouTube? It puts me, and puts me in a position that I don't like?
Well, why wouldn't you? You stand behind what you...
I stand exactly behind.
Why does it bother you? People see it?
Because I don't like being called on the telephone and get jumped on for what I said because they think it's my personal opinion. It is not my personal opinion. I am relaying misinformation from people that we are working with and they jump on me personally. I don't like it, Ryan. And I don't like it, Cody. Now, you got the right to film it, public media. But when I start getting phone calls from people that are involved in this and they're jumping on me, I got a problem with it.
Brief, Mr. ...
Sir? I'll go back to the project that we're working on with Mr. Bob Hawkins. Okay? I think the deal is dead. There's too many people involved in it, too much information is left this building.
It is Bob Hawkins.
Bob Hawkins is the individual that came to Mona first, and he wanted to put a chicken restaurant, an upscale convenience store, and a possible wash interior in the Crump Shopping Center.
So, does he own Crump Shopping Center?
He does not. That's part of the problem.
Well, you said last time he owned 51%.
I didn't say 51%. I have never brought the word 51% up in it, and we can go back and look at the meetings. I personally have never said 51%.
Okay. Last, last time he owned it, I thought it was the A.O. and controlling instruments. So, no, you're right.
I did not say that, Ryan. Go back to your camera with your buddy over here.
Well, let me ask this person, and I'm not supposed to. Why are you saying that it's dead when it was a guy, I don't, I don't remember where his card is, what I gave his card that said that he was finna open that and do the gas station and stuff? He was some coffee counter? Because he gave me a card down at the game room, and he told me he was looking for some people to work for him. So, now, like I said, I don't know what's going on with none of this, but when the...
The last conversation I had during with Mr. Hawkins was, what is it, Thursday afternoon? And he is claiming that he's got a problem with Chris Spencer and Mr. Muniz. I found out about 45 minutes ago that the real problem is there's a, there's a question about the service station, whether there has been hazardous material leak out in the, in the area. And Mr. Hawkins has told Mr. Muniz that he needs a Class One or Level One environmental study to see. Okay? What happens with that is they come in and they do, they do just drill a few holes. They carry it back and analyze it. And if there is diesel or cleaning fluids or whatever, then they make you do a Level Two. Now, you have the option not to do it, but if you buy that and you haven't done due diligence on your Level One and Level Two, you're liable for it. And if you ever sell it, you've got to clean it up.
I mean, the tanks up, it took over a while.
Exactly.
And what it is, they own tanks and they don't rush it and so the...
And that, and that, as late as 45 minutes ago, that's what Mr. Hawkins is, he's not going to do it. And he wants Muniz to pay for the, for the expense of the Level One and possible Level Two. And Muniz says he's not going to do it without a signed contract to file. So, but again, as late as Tuesday afternoon, Bob Hawkins says he still wants to do it, but it's just going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. And we've been working on this, what, four months? I don't think he's going to do it.
It's been longer than that, actually.
He brought a gentleman from an oil company out of Sherman, Texas, that was going to come in and put the fuel tanks in for the trucks. And the guy was supposed to come back and talk to me, bring the owner of the company. I can't get the people to return my call. Apparently, they didn't like Long Star. They didn't like what we had to offer. He got, Hawkins got hold of another oil company that was going to supply the fuel, and they were supposed to call and come down here, and I've not heard anything from them. I'm saying I think that deal with Mr. Hawkins is done. I don't think it's going to... Huh? It's, and I've actually told them, you know, we need to proceed or we need to, or we're going to proceed with the possibility of doing something else in there. And I've got, I'm getting an appointment with Mr. Muniz next week. He owns the shopping center. But I got a phone call from Chris Spencer about 4:30, and he's mad. He's upset. He thinks that I had personally attacked him in public, and it was not an attack on Chris Spencer. I was relaying information that Bob Hawkins gave me. I was relaying it to the council so you'd be up for what was going on. And when Chris Spencer calls me and wanting to know where I'm at, I take that personally. That's all I have on, on the EDC. The count, the chamber, did you figure, did you get, find out how many people? I think we, we had lunch down here for the local businesses. It went real well. We have a lot of people here.
It is more than like 45.
I think we got 12 new members out of it. So, that's good.
What's the approximate number of people on the chamber now?
I think it's close to 20 to 24, something like that.
More than we've had in...
More than we've had in a long time. We are already projected out. We're working on the Easter egg hunt for Easter at the city park. So, we've got, we've got, I instructed them and tried to lead them into the, be out front. Don't wait till two weeks before Easter and then have a, try to have an Easter egg hunt. So, that, that's where we're headed. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. 7-1, the discussion of action items. View discussion of possible action by the council if we reconsider to sell the city's X-Mark mower to Stephen Bligh. The council voted to sell or trade this mower and purchase a S.C.A.B. mower in the 27th to 2018 budget year. Bobby Livingston will sue the council for requests, whose request being reconsidered.
Mr. Mayor, Castle? I appreciate you. It's, it's really no concern of mine, but it is in a way because we don't have very many people comes down and help its park, help clean up, help mow, take care of it. Stephen and his family and Chad used Stephen's line mower to keep up with the park, keep it mowed. We used, also used the city some, but Stephen's mower was used the most. And he burnt, blowed the motor up in his mower, so he ain't got a mower now. And now, I'd been here at the council whenever it was brought up the first time, but I was in the hospital. And so, I didn't know nothing about it until it's over a month after I got out, out of the hospital, I found out. So, my concern is, I think Stephen, we ought to do something. Either put a new motor on his mower or let him have that mower that the city's got. And that's, that's the main reason why I wanted to come down here and talk and give my opinion. I want to tell you something, there's not but about just a handful of people. Sometimes it's not even that many down there helping with the park. So, when somebody comes down there on their own, and their family too, and help keep the park clean for kids and come down there and have a good time, I think we need to do something.
I was aware that Stephen has worked extremely hard, puts a lot of time in there.
A lot of time, yeah.
He donated that time to the city. I was not aware he had used his own resources to make it look better for us.
Well, he used his own mower, not, in my opinion, and I think the city ought to, since they've got one, they need to stand up and do something with this in here to help him out. That's all I, that's all I'm saying. Thank you all.
I appreciate your comment. So, why didn't the original deal go through?
It was brought up at the time that, one, there was a question of could we sell something outright without an auction process? And second, we were already voting on auctioning off other equipment, so we included it. It was kind of something in that.
In lieu of that, can we legally do that selling directly to him?
Of course, I'm aware we don't have to, you know, obligated the auction thing. We were, like Keith said, just going to do a big bundle of...
How long have you maintained that? I know it's been more than a year, right?
He did about three years.
Probably his whole life.
I've been living where I'm living about four years, so it's been about three and a half, three.
Okay. I appreciate it. I know you've done good work out there.
Yes.
How do you want to perceive this? Do you want to tell him to buy it or do you want to operate and live to service?
If, if we have the option to sell it without going to auction process, I have no problem myself selling it to him. And in my opinion, that a discounted amount. I am fine with that amount of fuel he's probably spent alone, he probably would pay for it. But it's up to everybody what they want to do.
If we, if we go forward like that, we just want to use, I figured the amount, just I could have you in a fixed amount?
Do you remember what the trade in value of that was?
What did you offer Steve in your immediate?
1,500.
1,500?
It seems like, we kind of looked around, it seemed like the cheapest ones are about 800 at you and I.
What was your return?
One of those. I had, I actually put it out three places as a trade-in on this gag, and we were offered between eight and $1,000 trade-in off three places, so.
Take the low end of that, it's 100 if you think that's fair.
I think it's fair. I think more than property. I ain't going over there no more, no. But I'm just being truthful about it. I'm not.
Well, can I get a motion and amount?
I make a motion that we sell the used X-Mark for $500 to Mr. Stevens.
Can I give a second? All in favor, say aye. How about it? How about the best? Thank you for all you've done for us.
Don't stop mowing.
Yes, ma'am.
I think it's, besides, it's on the, given their time and service, and we really never know. That's, that's big solid, the gentleman you are.
Thank you, ma'am.
7-2, Kathy Bull's consultant was going to, to discuss, she takes its own program, but she is unable to attend tonight, so we're going to mark that one. Mark 272. Not on tonight. 7-3, view discussion of possible action by the council to consider having the shoreline of Rocky Point, the city park spray for Hydrela made 2018. We did that a couple of years ago. Hydrela had choked up, I think, approximately 100 and, maybe 120 acres or something. And we had a consortium of people around the lake. You had to pay so much per, what was it, square foot? Would that have... Shoreline, 350 per square foot. And that was, that was wildly successful, I thought. But we saw it coming back again this last summer. It didn't really take root and grow and choke the shoreline out, but it's probably going to happen this year. The city did pay for Rocky Point and the city park, keep it over for swimming and fishing, but the citizens prepared the rest of the shoreline. I wanted to mention that because there was, there was some confusion. People thought that the city had paid for all of it, and that wasn't the case.
Well, you only had a big meeting here, you know, back in 16, a little bit further.
I noted in Sandy's report, Lake Four. She's got an invasive species that's coming in. We get two of those. Giant salvia is coming in, and it's just the right of time before we're going to get it here. The other lakes have it, and it's, I think, it's treatment, but might fend it off and keep it under control. I think it's, from here going forward, it's just going to be a necessity that we treat the shoreline.
Is it legal for us to treat the shoreline? It's state, it's by the state. Water is home by the state, right?
Yes, the state owns all water.
And they okay with us spraying the shoreline?
Yes.
They get permits from, from the state. They got permits.
And how much does it cost?
I think last year, or the last time we did it, we were on $100.
Kit, how many, how many grass carp come back or something like that?
How many what?
Yeah, we, we looked at that. It was discussed, what you have to do, you put any grass carp, you have to gate off incoming streams and the spillway so that they can't escape. Even though they are considered sterile, the state still wants them to contain. I would prefer to have that, but it's, it's one of my foster forces. And you are still on the land, so they would have to show that they're crossed.
Anthony, they won't participate too much.
I guess part of it depends on how many of the citizens that live, that have shoreline would want to participate to have an idea of what our expense would be.
The expense would be the same.
It's the same. It didn't matter how many you go, but the residents, it didn't change.
Okay. If the residents took part of the bill, if there's, is that part of it?
But all of them. You pay for your own shoreline. The way they did it before, if you piped it privately, personally, they sent others out to judge it.
If any single part of it doesn't get treated, though, let's say this person doesn't want to treat their particular part of shoreline, then we have to treat it anyway. Well, then, we kind of waste our time because it's going to go to nowhere. You either till it out or it comes back.
Well, it's going, it's going to come back every two, three years for a while.
Sure.
It's going to be an ongoing issue.
Now, the only way that I've seen to keep that stuff going, we dug it up or sprayed it. The only way I've ever seen to keep it going is to act, is to use, like, the areas that you use boat around, that you swim in, or pack down, keep it so, you know? So, I don't, I don't want to spend the time, Rocky Point used to be my favorite place to launch a boat because it was so easy to, it was so shallow for so far out there, and it was just really easy to get out, when you could just pull straight up the hill. But that road's kind of deteriorated. And I don't, I don't want to say, I'm saying, y'all come on and use this, this area some more versus that, but I mean, it's kind of, it's hard to see the minutes, or not. It's talking about a three-year turnaround, this lot will come back in three years.
It grows at average of six inches today. And when you chop it up, when it floats out, it reseeds.
And you have to pull it out and pull it out of water.
Yeah, so it's every few days you're out there, you're going to be pulling it out. And I've seen the sly as, tried to use that approach, when they were raking it continually, they had huge piles of it. But they couldn't stay on top of it, and Jim was out there every day. So, I think, and the spraying was, it was very successful. It was our only salvation. But Sandy is going to go, effectors, we, if you live along Lake Shore, you've all seen received, you know, some are to sign up already.
And you're saying spray, is it, is it a spray or a pelletized?
I understand it's a spray.
And one of them looking to were pellets, and they would sink in, stay in the water.
So, do I have any, is there any further discussion of questions, possibly answer any further action?
I think we should definitely spray the swimming areas. The kids have used that swimming area.
Rocky Point has, has a lot of traffic.
And it does, it does. They're, they're a fair lot.
Go here a second. Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we do participate in the spraying of the Hydrela.
Then it's just for Rocky Point and this, a part of the area? Then it's just for Rocky Point and this, a part of the area.
Second, all in favor say aye. Can you oppose? Seven four, review discussion of possible action by the council, consider approving this ordinance regulated game rooms to Long Star. For which we pray a tweet, I'll pretend the title was deep, and the ordinance will be drafted soon, consideration, the gentleman.
Uh, each council member has a copy of this ordinance, it's a proposed ordinance given by the police department with, uh, exceptions put in. Where the city will actually be making approximately five hundred dollars per year per gaming establishment. The five hundred dollars will cover the permit. For the machine, machines, there will be no more than forty machines in any one location, which the most we have is one right now, is like, excuse me, twenty-two. The hours operational will be from eight AM to two PM, I mean, excuse me, eight AM to two AM, Monday through Friday. They will shut down at two. They'll all be, uh, viewed by the code enforcement officer, myself, or whoever we designate as a, uh, person to enforce the code. The game rooms will have to have littering outside stating it as a game room, room in certain sizes. And if the person fails to abide by the set rules we have here, the first violation will be a five hundred dollar fine, or up to a five hundred dollar fine. Second violation will result in a fine not to exceed five hundred dollars and a fifteen-day mandatory suspension of establishment's city operation license, which means it'll be fifteen days that they will not be able to run gaming machines. A third violation is called a result in a fine not to exceed five hundred dollars and a thirty-day suspension of establishment. And the fourth will be a fine not to exceed five hundred, and then establishment's operating license will be revoked at that time. This will give us a, uh, a little bit of, uh, of a tooth hold on what we need to do. After two o'clock, three o'clock, there's nothing but, uh, problems that arise, certain ones that stay open. We are there till approximately two o'clock with a, on Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, with, uh, security that's paid for by the establishment. And after two o'clock, uh, what we see coming in is people from other towns and everywhere, it's meeting up. We've already busted up one drug deal going down in the back of one of the establishments here recently, and got a delivery charge filed on that person. With this, we'll be able to do more and have a little more teeth into what we wanna do. This ordinance here sets some pretty strong rules, but it also fixes a problem where the city hasn't, the only thing the city retrieves from these businesses is any tax sales on items inside of the business. Now, each establishment will have to pay five hundred dollars per year for a permit, which is over and beyond what we can come up with by just permit and each machine individually on an X number of dollar permit for the whole establishment. We come up with this one round number that's easy to keep up with, uh, we won't have to go in there and look at, uh, see what serial numbers on the back of what computer or whatever to decide whether it's legal or illegal at that time.
I noticed in, uh, reading the, uh, comments from Naples, Omaha, Dangerfield, I think, and I think Harris County, Harrison County. Harris County, was it Harris County? They varied in their times that they allowed them to operate. I think Harris County was up to eight o'clock, and, uh, the other three townships in Morris County, I think, were at twelve, ten or twelve. Why are we going to two?
Most of the. We can, we can, up to two o'clock, we can control, I mean, without any extra anything. And there won't be but one business that'll stay open that long, and that'll be the mobile station more than likely. Uh, and probably the, uh, other gaming establishments at, at the north end of town. The one at the north end of town, he, uh, he has a clientele of mostly elderly folks coming in for some reason. His main money venue is from the gaming, but he does, uh, supply, uh, dinner, supper, food, or whatever you wanna call it. The Marshall Tavern has, it's bar and grill, plus it has the, uh, gaming establishments. They don't stay open till about ten or eleven at night. Mr. Allen, what, how long does Shamrock stay open, you know?
I think it's ten through the week. Sometimes they close at nine, but on the weekend, I think it's, I think it's at eleven.
Yeah, so two o'clock's all right with, I mean, that's, that's a good time for us. It's just a set time. It's not mixed up during the week. It can be one thing, we're just set about across the board from eight to, to two AM. We thought that would be fair. That's just about a six-hour shutdown that they're having now. And if we catch them, you know, after hours, guys are gonna be going in, we're gonna be checking them. If we catch them operating after hours, they're gonna be sighted. There's not gonna be any warnings, it's gonna be sight first.
I noted that the DA had, I think he just talked to New Jersey's court, I believe, that's correct, correctly, if I'm wrong, and, and had extolled these guys. That that needed to be done. I think we're the last township, county, who was on a push to put up an ordinance. Express that it would definitely be the thing that is.
Is there any, what do you, uh, is there any way to, to tax what they're spending in the machine? Like, you know, we, our money is made on the sales tax.
Right.
So what are they spending in the machine? Do you not get to tax that? It's only, you talk, what they buy in the store?
What they buy in the store and what we, what we charge them on the permit.
I think we're waiting on the legislation to come out before we can do that.
That's Austin.
So there's, so Texas just says legally, no, you can't tax what you're spending in it, or?
Well, they won't come down and say if they're legal or not.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying, so?
See, that's what I'd like to know, is that, you know, you got Amazon collecting sales tax for us, but I wonder if there's a way to start collecting sales tax on what people are spending in those. Probably a chunk, probably way more than the machine.
There's no doubt. But the thing is, you've got Austin to, to sell this thing. Uh, we're just trying to get our little bit, I guess.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, legal or not, still, they're spending money on it, so why can't you, why tax them?
They're, they're deemed by the state of Texas as a nonprofit amusement machine. Same thing as the crane game. That's the reason they can run them.
Are they illegal? In my opinion, yes. What are we doing? We're just trying to legalize them and cut them like a dog.
Any other comments?
I got a piece of my note. Eight AM to me to two AM is, you know, seven days a week. I don't like, like to be open that long. I mean, I would look at it, you know, we could go eight to twelve, Sunday through Thursday, and then eight to one on Friday and Saturday. Yeah, I mean, the other ones, just because, you know, some of them's not open that late or whatever, it's gonna have to apply to all of the gardens. Eight AM to two AM, to me, that's too long for a big open space, and that, that much after midnight.
This was a time that we, that I thought would be easy for us to control, uh, keeping it in the same frame. If y'all want to change it, that's, that's your priority, but I have no problem with that. That's just my suggestion on what needs to be put out there.
I mean, I think Stephen was telling me that an officer is usually on duty until two AM.
No, so they're in on duty up to three to four AM.
Okay, yeah. You know, if you leave it at two AM and you go by there at two-thirty or three o'clock, and there's still people there, they're gonna be in violation.
Yes.
You know, which is fine, but, you know, to me, you just mentioned that, you know, the longer they're open right now, drug deals and things like that could happen, and stuff like that, where if you cut back on the hours that they could be in operation, you might eliminate some of that, too.
Are we having a lot of complaints from our citizens yet?
No, uh, we're not having any complaints to speak of. The only time we have a complaint is when somebody wins big and they don't pay them for the mouse. Y'all laugh, but all we talk, hey, man, it's civil, there's no criminal activity taking place, you know, it rules us out. Well, we, we actually, and, and I'm not, I think we've probably, in the long term, now progressed to the point that we are making arrests up there on people we have warrants on. Just by the person working security up there, sees them pulled up, and, you know, we'll go get them. And we could actually make some money off of that part of it. I set the two o'clock time just simply because we're there, we're in control of it, up till three to four AM in the morning. And I think we can handle it. If we catch them, there's no, there'll be, I mean, like I said, there's not gonna be any warnings, it's gonna go straight to ticket right there on the side. And I feel like after they get burned a few times, if they do get burned, they'll, they'll stop it. If they don't wish of it, that's, I mean, that's the end results of this thing. After four times, they, they get shut down.
Have, have any of the officers observed any payouts more than a five-dollar value?
Oh, yeah.
So then, we understand that the Attorney General won't enforce that the gaming machines are illegal as long as they're not paying out more than five dollars. But if we're observing them paying out more than five dollars, they are breaking the law with no question. Are, are we gonna, are we doing anything about that end of it?
If I was to pile on somebody for paying out after the district attorney lapped me out of courthouse, because they're not gonna get involved with these people that own these gaming machines. Because it's not the establishment itself, per se, that person that owns them, it's a big nationwide industry that has these things. They can go in and spend thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars on attorneys, where if the county up here has to defend something like that, they may have to go send ten to fourteen thousand dollars into a case. They're not gonna do it. I mean, it's just mathematics on the.
And I believe the fine is a thousand dollars if they lose the case.
Right, so it's, you know, right now, it's best to do what we can with what little control we have on it till the legislators get off their behinds and say, hey, these things are illegal, we're gonna back you up a hundred percent, Attorney General's gonna do this. Right now, the Attorney General, he won't get off the fence. He won't say one way or another. So it leaves us out here in the cold. Whether we do something right or wrong, we don't know if we're doing it right or wrong, but we're doing something.
Hey, also, it's a word game. It's not, they're cashing out, they're redeeming.
Yeah.
In, in the wording, it's cashing out for profit, but if they're redeeming, it's not an amount, it's what? That's the, the limbo thing.
It says it on the coupon donation.
Yeah, it's a word game.
I've gone over there and played things. They could get a dollar a day. And you go, it says donation on it.
So we do have a, a, an officer on duty on Sundays as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We're, we're there.
Okay.
We're just trying to, I guess we're more, we're just gonna put our foot on the problem so we can regulate it on the bill. We haven't anything in place now, we're in something where we're mad to the.
I think a lot of work's been compiling amongst the other things and everything. I have a question of enforceability, so I have issues with that.
Are you with what, I mean?
Enforceability.
It's gonna be enforced.
Oh, okay.
Or?
Um, no, not that you guys aren't gonna do your job, that's not what I'm getting at. I, I think it's a jurisdiction issue.
Yeah.
And everybody's gonna have a different way of regulating. We, I could call another town, say, call Marion Council, they're gonna have a different perspective of it. We're gonna interpret it one way, uh, you're gonna interpret it one way, everybody has a different interpretation of it. But what we wanna do is just get our foot on it so we can try to regulate the undesirables coming in after hours.
Can I applaud that?
Sir, I personally sat down with Steve Cowan and went over, you know, what, what's legal and what's not legal in these gaming machines. Technically, he keeps throwing up, you know, there was a case in El Paso where they sued, because they went in and took the machines out. And the gaming people came in and sued them, and the county there didn't have a leg to stand on. So he's looking at all these counties that can't afford to fight these people. So he, he really won't give me a, an answer. All he can say is, as long as you don't put money in the machine.
And, and my concern is us getting into a lawsuit, trying to enforce something that we don't have jurisdiction on.
Right.
And, and we can't afford to get in a lawsuit.
That's not, that's not gonna happen with this ordinance. All we're doing is regulating the times that they can have them operated. It doesn't have, and it just states what, what we're gonna do if we find them in violation of that ordinance, not, it'll be anything illegal.
Mr. Austin charging them too, you know, just.
For a permit fee, yes.
I see, they're, they're kind of love-hating of me. I haven't, people aren't complaining about them, per se. Y'all, and I'm, I'm married by y'all, I haven't heard a lot of people just really complaining about them. I care less if they, I, the only thing I don't like here, that's all you see in Long Star, you know? And I don't really like here now.
Well, when the signs try to come to Long Star, it seemed like everybody got off, sticking forward. That's the problem with Long Star. When Stubb was here, nobody, we have had flower shops, we've had all kinds of shops come here. What the people do here, they go to Van Gogh's, Mount Pleasant, everywhere else but, because that lady had the flower shop right here in this little building on this side. There was a beauty shop, there was, uh, some guys on the, some kind of clothes store there. They left, they left because nobody bought nothing from them.
If we don't regulate them, if it comes a vacuum, where they're open until four o'clock in the morning, we can't cover it, then you really got a lot of useless activity that's gonna happen. That creates a huge problem.
I've had calls in the last week from two other people wanting to open neighbors.
I, I, I agree that I see there as a problem with them being open late at night.
Well, we chose, we chose the time, Mayor, from, you know, two o'clock, because you have one of us working up there from ten o'clock to two in the morning. And, uh, that's why we chose that. And then Van Gogh closes at twelve, so we'll get some of their traffic from twelve to two. With, you know, they'll still go in and buy stuff, and then you, they'll buy soda or buy a candy bar or something, and then go back there, so. You know, that's, that's always a good thing for people to come into your businesses and buy some stuff.
I didn't have exception to it, I just, it just got by each other, just.
Well, me, Chief, and Kenny really sat down and we hammered on this ordinance and trying to figure out what the hours needed to be. But we, we wanna be fair with them, too, because it is a place of business in our city. And we wanna be fair to everybody in the city that's wanting to bring a business here, regardless if it's a, if it's that type of business. But it brings people to the city like Mr. Gary says.
That's right, if they're in there hoping they'll buy soda, or maybe they'll go buy a twelve-pack, maybe they'll stop by gas on the way out of town, you know, or in town.
They will buy stuff in that show, like on the hill, they have food and stuff, chickens, chicken.
Now, whether you like the game rooms or you don't like the game rooms right now, it brings people to our cities.
It's a hard thing.
What, what cute, you know, one thing I wanna get to, well, how, how long is it till we set up, well, if you sell shoes, you need to be paying us, and if you sell antiques, well, that's, that's a problem, like that, we don't. More government regulations, maybe not that soon. Like I said, it's a hard decision to make, because I could kinda care less about the game rooms being there, but if they're not posing a big problem, I wish we could get money off the sales tax. Wish you could treat that, but I guess they've got their beat since it's a game room.
And it, the code, the code states that, you know, you can charge, I believe it's no more than five percent or fifteen dollars per unit for, uh, tax fee purposes. It's the way it's written into the, into the actual occupation code. But, uh, to, to regulate it that way, you're gonna have to go to every game room and get that tax ID number. You're gonna have to go back and regulate that they're using that machine, they're gonna, you know, every time they pull that machine out to replace it with another machine, you're gonna have to go back in there with another inspection. And it, it's gonna be a constant circle to try to keep up with all, with all the gaming machines that are in Long Star. But you're gonna have one guy that you're gonna have to pay to regulate that all the time.
Because he has to keep up with the serial numbers on each machine. If one goes down, he has to write that down. How long it's gonna be out of service, and when it comes back in service, what the problem was with it, and everything like that.
Right. Because if, if that machine's not in operation for more than fifteen days in a thirty day period, then you can't tax it.
There's some words that we wrote, it's just a simplified version.
It's a simplified version by having a five hundred dollar round.
And actually, it's more, if you look at it from number of machines versus what you could charge, you actually get more this way than you would be the other way, with less work.
You are here motion.
I like the motion that we accept the ordinance as it's presumed.
I see. All in favor, say aye. Raise your hand, please. And opposed, one, nobody?
Yeah, I'm in.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your work. Seven five, review discussion possible action by the council concerning approving the proposed expenditure by the Economic Development Board in an amount not to exceed seventy-five, seventy-five hundred dollars for attorney's fees. And as there you go, draft a certificate of formation. If you comment on it, please.
A question came up with the Economic Development Board about articles of incorporation. I looked and dug and found no evidence they had been submitted to the state. And so I contacted our attorney to see what we needed to do to rectify that. Uh, he told me that seven years ago, they got rid of the articles of incorporation and now are doing a certificate of formation. And so, uh, to get that done and just make sure everything is square and T's crossed, I had dotted, and he gave me a quote of, of seventy-five hundred dollars. It was a rough quote, but, um, that the Economic Development Board is wanting to get that done and presenting that expenditure to the council.
May I speak as President of the Economic Development Board?
Yes, sir.
We've been trying to find, as Devin presented, we've been trying to find the articles of incorporation for the, for the EDC and we can't find them. And our concern was that we're not legal, okay? And, uh, just to be on the safe side, I, the board asked Devin to check with, with legal. And they have recommended that we do this articles of, what is it, Devin?
Forma, certificate of formation.
Certificate of formation. And, uh, I, I was not aware that, that, that fee was somewhere around seventy-five hundred. We've not talked about that yet at EDC, is that correct?
Yeah, we did, the last week.
It was, it was five to sixty-five hundred at the EDC.
Okay. I, I guess I forgot that. But we have talked about this article of formation and we need to do that to be, to be safe and be legal. But we can't find it. I'm not sure what happened to the last group of people that were running the EDC. I know that there, there was a fee, I mean, there was a balance in the, in the, in the bank of somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars that the city took, is that correct? Yes. I've been telling them there was, there was a balance at the bank of somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars and that money went to the city. Okay? I'm not sure that that's, I'm not sure that that would leak, but there, there are no records. And, uh, if we're going to continue, we need, we need this done.
My biggest thing on it is the cost. I talked to a couple of people, they said they got it done for around fifteen or a hundred. I think y'all really need to question those lawyers on how much they're charging up for everything they need to go.
I totally agree with that.
They're way overpriced.
Does, does state cost to, I'm sorry.
It's staggering.
Who did you talk to?
How they were priced. I talked to, uh, Ms. Wallmit who had it done, Ms. Kim Wallmit, who had done my back, did the state and it was way over, I think it was fifteen hundred, that was huge.
Who was that for me, who was that from past EDC?
I don't, no, I don't think so. And that was with a charge from the state of four hundred bucks. I think Cody did one for around fifty dollars himself. So, um, you know, where, where seventy-five hundred comes from is pretty steep.
The state fee for incorporating or becoming an LLC is three hundred dollars for a full property, a non-profit is probably five hundred. Now, if we want to hire a lawyer or somebody who knows how to properly submit all that, so be it, seventy-five hundred dollars is way out of the ballpark.
I wasted your money, I mean, we haven't gotten it done.
It's one of the...
Whether or not, but it's not going to be any repercussions for not having it done apparently. So if you mess it up, the forty dollars, try again.
Look in the Texas Ministry of Law, they're loose.
I can ask.
I mean, that's, you know, we're part of the Texas Ministry of Law, you know, and they'll be able to give us a guide or a folder or whatever and see, you know, how much it would cost, it might be even if we incorporate it and do it for us.
I think we should probably approve like five hundred dollars so if somebody's looking into it, they can just take care of it. If they find the means, but then come back if we need more.
I would like to see that come back to the EDC and let us do the investigation and then come back and report to y'all about that seventy-five hundred dollars.
So no action this, let it go back to you guys?
Yes, it's what I'd like to do.
Your read, Dr. Allen. Unless I have a motion for anyone? No? We'll tackle that one for now. Seven dash six, review discussion possible action by the council concerning the sale or lease of Lone Star Elementary property to Lone Star Charter Schools for use of the charter schools. Council, consider the proposal, opposed agreement submitted by Cody Wallmack. And this will also be discussed in executive session later on, so we're not going to make any action on this. I guess you've all had an opportunity to look at that and read it, the proposal.
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve and go on with it. I don't think that the city has anything to lose by trying to start up a school here, I don't think so. Do the schools cost anything for the city to maintain? You're talking about, I've talked to Cody about it a lot, saying, thinking of opening a hundred something jobs to be created. We can get it rolling and get teachers in there, you know, the thing that goes along with feeding kids and things like that. You've got Lone Star's deal, there are bigger taxpayers in this area, Lone Star's not getting to build any of that for their schools. It's all going to danger, so, but I just don't see where the city has anything to lose to support having, building, building schools. I think it would go a long way towards, uh, to develop Lone Star, to get people to want to move here.
Mr. Wallmack, what stage are you at and what's your completion work at this point?
So the last time I talked to you, or the first time I had talked to you, I believe, I had said that I'd like to have two application cycles, two generations, um, which I would assume would be, uh, the one that was open and next year. They've, uh, they've opened up every single year since nineteen ninety-five, but the reason I said generations is because in theory, they could not open up for applications next year, right? But they have every year since nineteen ninety-five, so that's why I asked for two generations. Yeah, I filed the 501(c)(3) application and the person who had, uh, offered without me asking to pay the application fee for that backed, uh, fifty percent backed out and ended up deciding to go elsewhere but, but coming up with that. And I asked the IRS to expedite it, which they have, and I believe I should have that within the next couple of weeks because the, uh, chapter two, uh, two hundred and fifty-three, section eleven of the local government code, this agreement wouldn't be possible unless it was being executed with a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, not just the state recognition, but the IRS recognition. So, uh, like I said, I think I should have that in the next couple of weeks. Um, and I was in, I did not submit the application when it came to the day of December fourth because I decided it was going to do more damage to next year than it would, there was no chance of it being accepted. The board wasn't where it needed to be, the application wasn't where it needed to be. So, uh, I, I made the decision not to submit it this year. Two major things that have changed since I first talked to you. I said that it was a, a long shot to bring a charter school here, but after talking to the people in Austin who would be the, the, the TEA employees who would approve it, I think it's a very, uh, great place for a charter school. They said, we hope you get accepted, we hope to come visit Lone Star because that is part of the process. They all come to visit the site. The other thing that, uh, one of the things that was developing in the application is that you have ten or twelve school districts where you would accept students from, but the first priority would go to students in Dangerfield, Lone Star ISD, or East Springs ISD who are within the city limits of Lone Star. So it would be opened up to applications within the city limits of Lone Star first, and then if you had spots left over, it would be opened to the other school districts. And, uh, I don't know, do you have any other, do you have any questions other than that?
Generation twenty-three or generation twenty-four, what year is that?
So, generation twenty-three would be starting in two thousand and nineteen, would be your starting class. And the plan, uh, right now would be to start with kindergarten, first, second, and third. And then to build from there, one class per year to K through twelve.
So twenty-four would be twenty-twenty?
Yes.
You mentioned that your financial backer had Second Thaw Society or whatever out. Then how would you finance this? Does you have maintenance, you have teacher salaries to contend with, you have support systems, feeding the children, transportation possibly?
There, there is one federal grant, um, that funds year zero or maybe year minus one and year zero that you apply for after, I can't remember which, you, you can't apply for the federal grant until you create some sweat, and the state grants, and that would be one option. I think if Lone Star Charter Schools has this building in its possession, then you can raise money. You can't really go to people and say, hey, contribute this money to the city for something that might happen. That would be a lot harder. I mean, this, this here, uh, is a deed that I'm, you know, willing to say Lone Star Charter Schools would take this on, this responsibility. Uh, another thing that's changed, at one point I said I would try to raise the money to bid on if it came to production. I think that's much less likely now from some of the things I've learned. Uh, so Lone Star Elementary is one year newer than West Elementary. So it was maintained, you know, in the same sort of state, same sort of vintage of building. And so there's, for example, the, there's asbestos tile, this is probably asbestos tile also with carpet over it in the hallways. The tile that was in the cafeteria was asbestos tile, but it was removed and replaced with non-asbestos tile, more or less the same as West Elementary. Now, if you wanted to say, I'm going to take this property, it's ten acres, and I'm going to, you know, knock the building down, you can't, it's completely regulated. And the, the cost estimates for removing the asbestos before you've demolished it, before you've hauled off any of the materials, is three to six dollars per square foot, it's thirty-three thousand square foot. So you're like, looking at, if you bought it for the minimum bid of forty-five thousand dollars, you're looking at, uh, if you've removed the asbestos before you've demolished the building and before you've hauled off everything, you have ten acres there on top of the hill, you're looking at, uh, ten to fifteen thousand dollars an acre. And so there's just, I think there's no possibility of anything other than a school and restoring the building. Otherwise, it is an albatross. It is a horrible purchase other than restoring it. Now, if it's restored and it's made into a school, it's the best purchase the city of Lone Star's ever made, so.
And you've looked into the asbestos cleanup and licensing and all for it?
Uh, one of the things that I, the only thing I, I think you could make it work would be to become licensed myself to remove asbestos. It's about, uh, eleven hundred dollars for the class and six hundred and fifty dollars for the license. The first thing that would need to be done is to get it out of the weather. So you need to fix the windows, uh, first.
What's the disposal, what's the cost of the disposal of asbestos?
For the kind of asbestos that's in the windows, very, very little because it's bound up in the, uh, the glaze, so it's not like loose and flying around. And for example, the, uh, the floor tiles have asbestos. You can actually remove those according to federal law in a public school without any license as long as they can be something like seventy percent in whole pieces. So, uh, and also the, uh, the removal of the asbestos from the windows is very minimal compared to, uh, other kinds of removal you do because you would more or less take the window off from the inside, put tape on the, uh, the ground, I'm sorry, not tape, clear plastic, and then you would, uh, basically go to town. And then it goes in a regular dump, like in Mount Pleasant. With, uh, who has, who has the dump in Mount Pleasant?
Sanitation Solutions.
Sanitation Solutions, there's, who is it? Waste Management, maybe?
I know, Sanitation Solutions is Gilbert and Harris.
How much you got in tearing down that house in Lone Star so far?
Just in hauling it off.
Two thousand dollars.
Just in hauling it up.
Just a small... A house at four oh four Germany Street. Uh, I'm on my fourth dumpster and there're five hundred dollars a dump. I get two thousand dollars, I, I paid, I paid a whole lot less for the, for the lot than it's cost to tear it down, haul it off. You're talking about major, major money to haul it, that comes down and made it off.
If, if you have a house that's under four dwellings, you can tear it down however you want and haul it off and throw it away however you want, there's no regulation. But if you're over four dwellings in a property, or if you're in a commercial building like a school...
When you say dwellings, what do you, what do you mean by that?
I'm not exactly sure that's the law, but I would assume it would be maybe an apartment with four, anything over that, or... I don't know if it's four bedroom, if it's four bedroom, then...
At the rate that, that, that it's going to cost me to tear these houses down that I'm, uh, houses down that I'm buying, you're saying that it, it's, that's a single dwelling?
That's my understanding.
That would be a single dwelling?
That's a single dwelling.
That I don't have to dispose of, uh, let's say that something was in the house. I don't have to pay for it. I could buy me a dump truck...
That's my understanding.
With a, with a trackhoe and clean it up. Or contract with a dump truck and, and a trackhoe and clean it up.
I'm not an attorney, this is not legal advice, but that's my understanding. You could, you could dispose of it with a leaf chipper if you wanted to. And there's no regulation.
So I'd take it out someplace and dig a hole and bury it, burn it in a burner pit.
Throw it in the trash can, anything you want. But if it's over four dwellings or something, thirty-three thousand square foot, a commercial building the size of a school, like I said, it's a year newer than West Elementary, uh, which is in operation and within regulations. So if it's not restored into a school, I just, I don't see that anybody who's aware of that is going to, to bid and, and pay forty-five thousand dollars for it.
The issue of, of, if you're not, that makes sense to me. If it is considered hazardous and it's hauled away, how could you just dump it at a side of the wheel?
Well, it's government regulations for you, for one. But if it's there, it's only hazardous when it's blown apart into little pieces and exposed. If it's in place, if it's, uh, you know, there is no hazard. But if you're going to tear the building down, so if you were to treat that property, it's either attractive as a school or ten acres of land, right? And if it's ten acres of land, you have to tear the whole thing down, which means you have to disturb and remove every bit of asbestos, right?
There's no, there's no problem, problem with asbestos as long as you're not moving it. It's, as soon as you start moving it, sawing on it, shrinking it, and it goes airborne, it's when it gets in your lungs and causes issues.
Federal regulations require that every single school district in the country keeps a asbestos management plan in their administrative office during normal business hours. I went to every, almost every, with the exclusion of Jefferson and Pittsburgh, neighboring school districts and showed up in their administrative office and said, I'd like to see your, uh, asbestos management plan. And, uh, East Springs and New Diana came the closest to, uh, meeting the, the legal requirement of having it there and ready and not...
Had they like tear down Longview High School?
I don't know.
You're at the center of Longview? So I imagine it was, hey, I'd like to know that.
Yeah. Longview High School and Leannex.
You had a little run-in with the EPA while back in Houston, didn't you? In truck yard?
Yeah. I had, uh, I was sitting down there to, to, uh, to, uh, clean up a pipe yard, about two hundred and something acres of pipe yard. And, uh, the previous management there at, at E.L. Farmer had... And, uh, the previous management there at, at E L Farmer had five huge piles of trash, lumber, tires, everything. And one of my foremen that I brought from Lone Star, well, you know, we're from East Texas, if you've got something, you, trash, you, you burn it, you know? And he came in there one day and asked, said, what do you wanna do with these tr- uh, trash piles? I said, burn them. Go down there and get you ten gallons of diesel. And he went down there and, uh, he, uh, set that first one on fire and he, uh, the story I tell is it looked like a Vietnam firebase, there were helicopters coming from everywhere. There was probably six helicopters circling. Then, then, then there were some on, uh, high cover, there were television, radio, uh, television stations. I had a pretty good fire going. And there was one little helicopter that came in with a little bubble, landed right, right in the front door. And this guy gets out in a three-piece suit, the first thing he says is, I wanna know who started this fire, who's in charge here? And I said, I am. And he said, I going to put you under the friggin' jail. It cost, uh, we got a five, I had to go to court, we got a five thousand dollar fine. Judge says, case dismissed. He says, you know what you, you know what your mistake was? You should've set them all afire. It would've still been five thousand dollars. It cost ninety-seven thousand dollars to haul that trash off three miles down the road to, uh, landfill. Ninety-seven thousand dollars. That's what it cost, yeah, that was in Houston.
One more question, is there, I'll be quiet a little bit. Ask, I'd ask you in a previous conversation, what's your market share look like? How many people have you had who could be the center of charter schools? Has that occurred?
You have to be very careful, uh, of even how you take down someone's name. And that's one of the things they went over at the meeting in Austin. Because you have to be very careful to, uh, if you get too much information from someone, then you can be selecting which students you want, which you legally can't do. Other than to say, within the city limits of Lone Star, you can, you can select them geographically. You couldn't say, we want this nice neighborhood and not this one, they'd look at that pretty closely. But, um, uh, when Lone Star Elementary was closed ten years ago, they said it was because of declining enrollment. And I compared the last seven or eight years that it was open compared to West and South Elementary. And West and South Elementary were declining at four times the rate of Lone Star Elementary. So, um, you also, I did some demographic, uh, projections by looking at the demographic, uh, rates of change over that seven-year period and projecting them to the current year. Plus, I think you would get a significant number of students from this corner of Pittsburgh ISD because they are only ten minutes from Lone Star Elementary, from where they live up the hill to Lone Star Ele- Elementary. But they have to go thirty miles to school every day. So they've never had the possibility or thought of coming here because of the lines, you know, drawn for the school districts. So I, I think you would get a significant number of stu- uh, students from a couple of rural communities just on the corner of Pittsburgh ISD where it comes right across the bridge. Jefferson ISD also comes to a corner there, of course, not very many people. But what the plan was, was, uh, about sixty per class.
And it's not as highly regulated by the state, right, as far as subject material and just teaching for, uh, whatever the test is or before?
You do have to take all the same tests and, uh, but the curriculum and the teaching material is not as regulated. You do have to, uh, have, have to take all the same standardized tests. And if you, if a public school does really bad with standardized testing, they'll just keep doing really bad, they'll say, you know, you need improvement, you need improvement. It has to get really bad before they shut them down, they will set a charter school down much more quickly than a traditional public school.
That's hell of a higher standard.
But I still have you.
Go ahead.
But have you actually talked to anybody in the Lone Star area about if they're interested in?
Yes.
I mean, so do you have numbers of people, I mean, you can't have taken down names, but.
I have taken down names, but I've not taken, say, demographic data for students.
That's what, that's, that's what Brady was asking, have you actually got a ballpark figure of how many students that you might have to start with that first year?
Six, uh, so, uh, sixty times four, two hundred and forty.
So you actually have, you've spoken to that many people?
No, I haven't spoken to two hundred and forty people. Uh, that's, that's, that's the wrong multiplication anyways, what am I?
Why would it, why would we assume that it wouldn't be as full as Lone Star Elementary was when it was closed?
But, uh, so you, you have, between two years there, one of the major responsibilities of any organization is, in management, is marketing. You have to market the school well enough to attract that many students. So it would be significantly larger than, say, like an Avenger. You know, not as large as a Hughes Springs or Dangerfield as they currently are.
Could, could I speak for just a second as, as President of the Economic Development?
Are you, if you'd like to call me?
If I've answered, uh.
Well, I mean, I'm just curious about that. Just because we have a school here doesn't mean that everyone would go here. I mean, there's, some of them remain at Dangerfield.
It's been much more completed.
How far do you drive every day, Devin, to go to, to take your kids to school?
One of Dangerfield and one of Hughes Springs.
We're talking three minutes up the road, that'd be awesome.
But, but, but if you take them to school, rather than the night bus.
Have you seen any cars picking up schools at every school you go by now? It's ridiculous.
Let me, let me see, if, if you have no more comments, you can call your questions.
I do.
We're gonna, okay. But we do have to go in the executive session and discuss that, and this kinda conversation can go.
Okay, I'm good.
My suggestion, go ahead, sir.
Well, I mean, I, is there any, so if it doesn't work out, we talk to Mitch, we, I'm sorry. You, uh, does the city lose the school through this or something? If we don't, you know, it's not like we're giving it up and it's just gone, cleaning down the hole.
So, you know, if you, uh, if you did not receive the charter, um, to accept students in twenty-twenty, then it would automatically revert back to the city along with any improvements that have been made.
And you're willing to work on it, but you've already made a list of all the broken windows there, right? Very comprehensive list.
I have some, I have some contractual legalese things that probably are better in executive session. But I do have a few questions that are just fine details of wording.
Can you just comment on that now, or you're willing to do it?
I just, like, to the executive session, I don't.
The comments that, that I want to make is, is they're, they're not personal. No way, shape, or form of, it says, President of the Economic Development. I hope you succeed, I told you that the first night, did I not? I said, I, I hope you succeed, and I do. But when you get into, into executive session and y'all start talking about it, the city has no skin in this game. Not, not, zero, you didn't pay for it. Economic Development Board paid for it.
And who do y'all answer to?
I, we, we answer to it, but it was Economic Development Board money that bought it. I'm just, I'm not arguing.
City taxes.
I'm not arguing.
I mean, E D C answers to the city.
That, I'm not questioning that, Ryan. I'm just saying, when you make your decision, you have no skin in the game. The E D C bought it. So, so it, it, oh, yes.
Have you been telling it?
No.
So you have.
Look, Ryan, you're, you're taking what I'm saying way out of context. I'm saying, you have, the city, the city has no, has no money invested in this.
No, I'm not your opinion on it, that we owe you forty thousand dollars.
The E D C has forty thousand dollars in this game.
Of city money?
Oh.
Collected from the taxpayers of Lone Star.
That's right. But it was, it didn't come out of your general fund.
Just to call out this, and, and your, your, your comments are well taken as well.
But you have, the city has, the city has no money in this game. Give it to him, let's see what he can do with it, that's what I'm saying. You know, and I've changed my personal opinion about it. I hope you succeed, I hope you have kids running everywhere. Because if you are successful, it benefits the city. That's all I'm saying. You have zero money in it, the E D C's got the, is, is paid to bill. And quite honestly, if it goes to auction and somebody buys it, I want the money back to the E D C, so we can use it for whatever. You have zero in it. And I hope you succeed. That's all I'm saying.
Thanks, sir. Any other comments, questions? Then for a moment, we're gonna leave this discussion and go to seven, seven, we'll have a discussion, possible action by the city council to consider leasing office space at Lone Star State Bank. Tell us if you'd comment on that, what has occurred since we last met.
Me and I met with Kathy Tittle, who's an officer with Community Bank, Lone Star State Bank. And talked to her about the terms of the agreement. I asked her about, uh, one of the, the terms was that the city maintain all of the grounds, the landscaping. They agreed that the city, uh, mow and use the blower, their landscaper would maintain the edging and the hedges. We talked about lease term. They had originally proposed five-year lease term at five hundred dollars a month. They agreed to extend it out to a ten-year lease term with, after the ten years, possibility of increase in rent to, say, six, six fifty a month. Now, let me know some of this. If that was all.
Ten years at five hundred a month?
No. As opposed to a five-year term, it's, it's more a commitment from both parties. They know they've got guaranteed revenue and we've got more stability and location.
What do you say, I mean, after five years, you just five hundred dollars a month?
Right.
And extended it to ten years, it's still five hundred?
It's still five hundred a month, but after that ten years, that it's up for negotiation on.
It could go up to six fifty.
Right.
And the citizens will still come down here to pay their water bill?
No. It would go, they, all operations would move.
To the bank.
To the bank. And, uh, I met with Bowie Cass this week and Glenda Varner, who has worked in Bowie Cass office, is retiring tomorrow. They are going to close that office completely, uh, once they make a transition. And they're going to take the payments at Lone Star State Bank. There's gonna be, they're gonna set up some computer terminal to where you can go through the drive-through, pay your bill.
Maybe side push goes in.
And so, uh, they came by and let us know that that's their intention. I don't know the date yet, but they're working on that transition. So basically, it'd be a one-stop shop, they could come pay the water bill and then go to the bank and pay their electric bill. So it's one of them.
And there was an issue of divided cost, I believe?
Yes, uh, the construction cost that has been discussed previously, the different projects, the bank is willing to split that fifty-fifty. Do we take on one project or all of them, they're willing to split that.
And then we give them free water?
They give water.
So it's, some months it's gonna be over a thousand dollars now, the water costs is. It seems like some of their water bills are free.
It's, it's gonna work a little differently because it's basically gonna be, like, I don't wanna say we don't pay for water because we buy the water from the Water District, obviously, but, like, City Hall doesn't get a water bill. It's just included in, in what we pay per month to the Water District. We would also be paying, cover their garbage because the city doesn't take their garbage collection.
Do we buy our water in blocks, tens of thousands of gallons or hundreds of thousands of gallons of water? Is it pretty variable based on actual usage?
Uh, it is in, um, units of thousands of gallons and it, it varies month to month how much we use, I mean, we're blocking by using. So, uh, some months, obviously, we buy more water because people are watering their gardens, etc. Uh, some months, or one month less.
And where do we think that this is gonna help the city, or bring more money to the city? The intent, our state council.
Yeah. The intent was to update our city. The intent was for investors who came in there to take us for serious things than they do right now. Create a police presence on the highway. About that, the additional room. Would allow a better working atmosphere for the city employees as well. She's gonna go get. Better get her house and she'll give you support. The intent of all things, whether we're, you know, raising the budget. Of all, the intent of all things that we consider, albeit whether it's a school or enhanced facilities, and bring business to this town, to offer our citizens amenities. There are no pet projects per se, we were, we were elected by the people here to look after the welfare of this city. And that requires hard decisions on our part, and everything is always on the table to consider. The reason that we are where we are, over ten billions, is because no one thought outside the box or we could always do that. And it's created two straight lines that directly led us to this place. Perfect system.
I don't, I don't see that building necessarily as around a generator. I see a building falling apart over there, that I'm very sure it's gonna need some major work, that cost of work to put it back in usable condition.
With ten or twelve thousand a year, you don't think we can spend a little of that effort on it?
Sure could, but I don't see a difference if we spend twelve thousand there or ten thousand there on something. I think it would be great if we look at having a better facility somewhere in the future. We obviously don't have the money for it now. And if we can get in a nice facility that looks good to people who might wanna open a business here for the next ten years, I think that's great. And then look at building something nice or buying something nicer that we own. That's my opinion. I, I don't see it necessarily as a, as a regular generator, I just think, we're gonna sink, you just look at the roof up there. It's, there's six grand right there, they needs it right now.
This came up as a possibility, we wanted to explore it. Rebecca talked to this Tittle again, to do diligence, i.e. the R of the deal, to see what we could get from it. Go ahead and comment on it.
Yeah, that was, that was it, I was just worried I was forgetting something.
My, my only heartburn with the whole deal is the cost of getting there. I, I think the five hundred a month to rent a place is money well spent. I think the cost to get down straight, the bank has come back and said, we know that's a still hangover. And so they're trying, they're offering to pay half of it, I think that's great. What's happened, I don't remember the total, so how much that's still gonna cost us.
Twelve thousand. I mean, for the, the whole total. It's fifteen, for, like, for all the five J, it's total, so you know, fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars.
Well, and, and I, I should probably be at an E D C meeting to, to propose this or to bring this up, but part of it is they're gonna be sharing their facility, part of it is they want to look better, we all want to look better for businesses that might come into the area, can their funds pay proportions?
We've, we've looked, yeah, we've looked at every, including that we won't if they grant, we can't.
Sure. If you look, if, if I'm running a chicken restaurant, all I care about is how much chicken I can sell. And if the city's not gonna start taxing me more for the chicken that I do sell, they, they mean well. And I might pay attention to what the other businesses look like, if the streets are passable, if it's where people wanna move to. What else is drawn, people wanna here and buy chicken. I'm sorry, I don't really care what the City Hall looks like, but, as a matter of fact, when you drive out to Rockwall, you see a huge City Hall there, they just built, I think. Did I just cross over into the border of Russia somewhere? What, what hap- What, what, how did this really governance got this big?
They were crammed in several buildings.
Either way, that's it.
I, I think taking half the bank building is conservative enough to not make us feel like we're money grubbers and going to raise your taxes. Or if a business is doing their due diligence, they'll see that you may never have to not to raise taxes. I think it does matter if they think that our town is full of drug users, drunks, or whatever, and that they're going to get broken into every night. I think appearance does matter. It's not the end, but it does matter. It would to me if I were opening a business here.
I think our please officer made a great point also, but I know they're not that interested in having. I just don't see the benefit in that. I'd rather see that money spent on fixing streets, on getting, putting a rock in, putting a park.
And also to bring that point up again, we can split these costs with water and sewer fund because half of the purpose of City Hall is water service.
So sixteen, basically around sixteen thousand could be split, eight thousand of us in the bank in the recommendation of that. Then out of that eight, and then part of it being out of water sewer, and then being out of, you're looking at four thousand, that's two different costs. Is that right?
So the full living cost, four thousand dollars, and cost of the general fund of six hundred a month plus seven, if you consider all the different moving parts of it. I'm assuming, you know, we're, we're taking up water, we're taking up sewer and landscaping and all that.
And, you know, the, the mowing and the mowing, basically, you know, our guys.
Right.
I mean, they already, or, you know, we use community service workers or inmates, if we can get them. And, you know, they mow here.
They showed that the cost of the edging and trimming of the edges.
Sure. So what would you suspect the monthly out of the general fund, did it be once in? Including any maintenance, which I, I believe the bank, it's here a million, the building maintenance, right? A shell, we get there at the end time.
Right. We, we would maintain the air conditioning plumbing and appliances, like in the breakroom area.
Did we budget that?
No.
Are we in the black? I'm not too sure.
Given what we're spending, that's up there, which was a good point, a question of what we're spending.
I'm not supposed to be giving, following bars.
And maybe that's the issue, maybe we're not spending any. I don't know.
We do have funds available in the CD.
I want to bring up the fact that in next month's meeting, we have, I mean, from our government agency, it told us about some government grants that we need to.
We also have a better grasp on sales tax revenue from Christmas spending.
Yes.
So I know we get this can certain times, but it might make sense to get it again. I don't know what, I don't think the bank has anybody else in mind at the moment. We don't want to anger them, I understand that, it's going to frustrate them, but we're going to do what's right for the city and the citizens.
Choosing what that is becomes a cloud of area.
You mentioned the money in the CD, because I think we discussed that a long time before, where we had decided to do that, that we could take some of the money from that CD to go toward expenses, to pay for the general fund.
Just under twenty-six thousand dollars in the general fund, see how it is.
I mean, we've got money to do this without, you know, without paying for the general fund.
I think, I think what he's concerned about is the five hundred a month, is that what you're saying, is coming out of the CD?
No.
Transition for the renovation.
Right. So we've got the transition down to four grand out of the general fund of, in that, that's, it's a lot of money that's moved a lot compared to the full general fund.
I mean, basically what the general fund, correct. If we decide to do this, then the general fund, I would have a general.
And it, it's an option. If you wanted to, let's say, pay a year's worth of rent, pay it out of the CD, fiscal rate, and look at budgeting that in the next.
You mess around with all lipstick on your boy, it's not a need for the city. And that's what I'm saying, it's a desire to have a nicer facade and nicer digs for the park. But it's not a need.
You didn't say this was all investments here.
I disagree with that.
And, and to update, and to update the image for our city.
I honestly see it as a six, one half dozen of another. I could go either way with no heartburn. I think really, I don't want to spend the money, but I see the value in a little bit nicer place. But honestly, at the end of the day, I really, I don't have a problem with going either way.
I would just throw this out, if, if there's a leaning of not going for the bank for whatever reason, consider, you know, reallocating that money, reinvesting that money into that building. All the green that we got last week, we had a trash in the bathroom because it was terrific. Now office flies. We need some paint, we need some flooring. I mean, it, it needs a lot because there's been squat done to it for how long?
Hundred years.
So.
My problem with it is we never want to cut anywhere else, it's just spring, spring, spring. It's going to have a backup here. It's already, it's get more, get more.
So we lean on you a lot. Pay with this cost and what it's going to take to put that building back to usable.
Has anybody just, I haven't had somebody come in and appraise the building and say exactly what it was all, can we do the build? Has anybody did that?
We had a quote on the roof, can I go see if I got that?
I mean, just remodel the entire building.
No, I don't, I don't think we need to remodel all the thing.
Inside, it, it, it's just over inside.
We can use it, but that doesn't mean we have the money for it. I don't throw good money at, you know, at a, a good paint job and new carpeting or something maybe.
I mean, I'm not talking, you know, rip walls down and have a whole, you know, fixer-upper episode, but, you know, flooring at least. That carpet's hot. We did have a quote on the roof, I don't think he came back and gave a quote for the, the corrugated, whatever that is. Just for the shingle part, three tab, twenty-five year roof, fixed one hundred dollars, laminated thirty year roof, six thousand dollars, that's from J.C. Monterey. That's for repair of the decking, the felt and the shingles and a new roof now.
You have to do it.
They had to tear off what's on there.
So in two, in two years, we'll have ocean damage. One year.
If you count.
The only thing that needs to be taken down was sweeping through it to the guttering. Needs to be either replaced or modernized somewhere or another.
Everything that you do, you're going to be tearing away material, it's going to reveal more material that's.
Move to the bank and just let that one fall in?
What? I just want to see the numbers so we can make a nice, I'm a computer programmer, I'm analytical, I want to see the numbers and let's lay them side to side and see what makes sense. I mean, they, I don't know what the building needs. And you know me, I visit a lot. If you give me a list and says it needs these eighteen things, I'm probably going to come by and say, show me now, give me this list of eighteen. And I may not deem all eighteen as needed.
The contractor come in and look at it, probe it.
Say what needs to be structurally sound.
Vetted my house out and see some of the work that was done and what had to be replaced that was, we didn't know, that we pulled stuff away. It could run a lot higher than you think than just painting it, every roof.
Putting makeup on it.
Putting makeup on it. So if we're going to do that, let's please do it thoroughly. So this could be why you.
I think we put a fifty-year model with part of it, cover it with it. Because the cost difference is only about a grand.
At the end of the day, it's a city-owned building, it's an asset for the city.
Sure, sure. And I'd like to see what it costs to put it back in usable.
Okay, the bottom line here, as I see it, we want to be, we want to be proactive, as I see it, we want to move forward. That's right. I mean, that's where we want to go. It's a, and I realize it's just an image, I understand that. But this building's not going to do it. I mean, we want to, we want to move forward, we want to, we want to look better, we want to move forward. I just don't think we can do it just sitting here.
Well, there's no doubt that thirty thousand dollars in that building, and I'm not saying by any means we should spend it. Let's just, for argument's sake, we want to put thirty thousand, forty thousand in the building. We can make that a nice building, that would be very respectable. So, and the, the benefit is in four years, we've paid that forty thousand that we wouldn't pay on there, and we own it, and it's ours. There is an advantage to that. There's nothing wrong with that approach, other than we don't have forty grand to throw at it.
But it's about grown it though, it's too small, that's part of the issue here.
Is that half of that thing significantly larger than that building there?
Oh, yeah.
Square foot wise? Do you get all the numbers?
I don't know the numbers, but I mean, they all said that that's significantly larger in space.
I'm a numbers guy. I would like to see, you know, if it's twelve hundred or thirteen hundred square foot or two thousand, thirty, twenty-five hundred.
I know that we have to be, you've heard how many people are involved, we've come to the board and the chamber of conference, we've got that many people involved in any time that I'm aware of, maybe more privy to information like that. I do know that you have a lot of enthusiasm right now. People are trying to make something happen that I haven't seen since I've been here, and that goes back to two thousand and two. If we don't capitalize on that, if we don't grab, if we're not aggressive, if we don't lead the way, they'll become discouraged and quit. You're right back where you were again, people complaining about roads, infrastructure, and there's no hope to raise the money, never fix it, because there's, there's no tax base here. And you don't have, we don't have a lot of time, and I'm not saying rush anything, but I'm saying there is an urgency that we look up aggressively.
The other thing that annoys me about this is it seems like the willingness of so many to spend this on a building we don't know, that I personally don't see as bringing anything in, but complete willingness to shun, you know, the school and not spend it behind on that building. You know? To where, like I said, look at, what, what brings people to Halls, what brings people to Chapel Hill? It ain't their City Hall, it's the school system. Look at Chapel Hill, there's nothing at all.
The Halls has got a lot of bigger tax base too, because they build new schools.
They didn't always. You know, when I was in Halls, they were about the same size.
Last fifteen years, they have grown since Halls.
They have, because they're perceived to have a good school. That's why people are moving out long, you'd go over there.
That's why people are leaving out of here too, going to Chapel Hill.
They closed our school. They should do that before they close.
Most of our kids here was going to Hughes Springs or Eastover City, and I do know that all those will go there by noon. For what reason, I don't know. And then some of Danny Field students is going to Paul Beal.
And reasons, Austin Parkway, so admirable to me, is that it's in Hughes Springs, Austin, I have a choice.
Let's follow back to discussion of Long Star State Bank and determine what you want to do going forward, if any. And then we'll go into executive session, we can have the same discussion about this. So if I hear a motion one way or the other, what is the council's pleasure?
Play the motion if you proceed.
I want to ask a question. Proceed in what way?
With, what we two say. Moving everything up there.
All in favor, say aye. How many ayes do I have? How many nays?
I think we need to table it and give the estimates that we were talking about and come back to this after the first year.
We're going to go back like that?
We've already made a motion to move.
If the motion fails, another motion can be made.
That's true.
So, so I'll, I'll follow in the nay for now. So that's three ayes. So now, I need a motion to give a nay.
I said, let's just table it to after the first year. Do as they ask, see what, the call to be either way, and then make a decision later on in the year. Because the bank can't go nowhere, it's been there this long, it's going to be sitting there, okay? Because, let, they haven't get somebody out here to estimate whatever it is that needs to be done.
Make a motion to table it.
I'm making a motion, we table it until after the first.
To quantify the cost and the possibilities.
Yes.
Do I hear second on that?
I don't want to delay things any further and lose that momentum, but I'll second that, and that I think we have due diligence to do. Being hasty is worse than jumping to it. You know, than taking our time.
And all in favor of the motion? Give me an aye. Hands up. Anyone, anyone not voting? Mr. Biden, the section five five one point zero seven two, the Texas, up in Big Zach, city council is now going to retire the closed session at seven forty-seven. The advance use of Long Star, we can profit to or by Long Star Charter School. We're going to open up session, the closed session.
Bring somebody in here that wants behind the corner to put a business in here, that sit in this right here, and a guy sat here to. He will not. You know, one of them called.
Well Mitch, didn't know how to say this, we wasn't going to move forward.
Kicking the can down the road.
Well, what, what else? What else? I want that of those people too, you got it right there.
And I've got people, I've got people. Now you're going to send people right here that is asking.
I don't want to do with that, that has nothing to do with that.
I do.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's a personal matter.
Did you mention?
That's a personal matter, it has nothing to do with the council.
You got your right there.
I'm going to speak up, one thing for all, it has to have a, they don't pay me with the council.
Tax on me personally, better stop.
Mitch.
Don't you smile at me. Don't you dare.
No, I can't get along. You can't do that. That's wrong.
Closed session was adjourned at eight fifteen P.M. No official action or vote was conducted during this closed session. Counsel, what is your decision?
Make a motion that we move to give an opportunity for school there.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? We have three opposed. Your aye? Okay, we have three, three ayes and two opposed. If you're certain you have a building for your passion to, if I understood the vote right, is that correct? Three, four, and two against?
It's not going to come down to legal documents and all that kind of stuff, it will get approved. It's not going to come down to legal documents and all that kind of stuff, it will be approved.
Um, do y'all want to discuss the issues of the agreement now, or?
Yeah, I don't, you can go with me now.
I, I do have one question since we've gotten to this point. Insurance. Apparently the city covers that, that property for liability. How we're going to reconcile how that works?
It becomes the property of Long Star Charter Schools. I mean, I don't want to pay that.
Well, I can, once the agreement's done, then I can, I can let our insurance carry it through.
I think we can lag, you, your final one, two, three is weeks away. I think we would delay the paperwork to get the five, the one, two, three completed so that he doesn't take on the tax liability.
Maybe best way after the first of the year, with the price of this, anyway, this is obviously going to be case in this.
I got it, it's going to be signed tomorrow.
When will I just, will you report back to us on progress?
So are you going to have your attorney, or if you had your attorney, you look over the agreement?
I have.
Attorney?
I don't, I don't think there were issues with the, the terms, other than advice of, you know, waiting till you get your charter, that, that was just, that is obviously canceled near the point.
Do you want me to voice my opinions?
Yeah, I think, you know, as good a time as any, they hatch all that out.
The, the two main concerns I had was, it was stated in here that it had to operate as a school within that timeframe. I think that needs to be clarified, that it's a state organized, a state-recognized public school. And I don't know if charter kind of is called public or not. What I don't want is the loophole of, I'm going to run a private school for one single day with one student, and I've now wiped all my responsibility to this contract. It needs to be written in such a way that it has to be operated as a charter school or other publicly accessible school.
Maybe we could address that, that loophole possibility or something like that.
Right, just a little cleanup is all I, I see there. And the second one was, at some point, your initial contact with us, you said, you couldn't write a contract that returns the property if you don't meet a criteria. That was your words. And if this contract says if any part of this is.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, repeat that.
When you originally spoke to us, I had proposed that we give you the, you know, deed it to you, but with the criteria, it comes back to us if you don't complete your part, and you said that's not legal.
No, no, I said that in the two-five-three point zero-one-one, that's required. But even if you didn't do that, if you were just any old five oh one C three and you dissolved, you cannot keep the property or distribute to someone. You have to give it to a non, another five oh one C three or a government entity.
Right, and.
Even if it weren't the two-five, the, uh, chapter two-hundred-and-fifty-three, section, chapter eleven, section eleven, if it was any other situation with a five oh one C three on the front.
I would expect the linko to state who it goes back to if you fail as a five oh one C three, so that, and, and I'm just thinking legal-wise, that you don't create a second five oh one C three, you failed this one, you get who it goes to, and now I've got it free and clear. It's just buttoning it up is all I care about.
Here's something here, this is section two-five-three point zero-one-one, in which you referred to. Says municipality shall transfer the property by the appropriate instrument of transfer. The instrument must include provision that requires the nonprofit organization to use the property in a manner that primarily promotes a public purpose of the municipality. And two, indicates that ownership with the property automatically reverts to the municipality if the nonprofit organization had any kind of failure to use the property in that manner. So it would automatically revert back to the city.
It's all, it's all, those are buttoned up, I'm good.
Deal. I mean, that's what states and that's what he's going.
Do you want to come back next month with a revised agreement to present to the council?
Uh, yes.
That might be better than us giving it to a lawyer who's going to mark it up to the nth degree. I would expect, but I, we would still want to review it by our lawyer, I assume.
Do you have any, do you want to get together anything?
Any further comments or questions? Do you have a move of the John, or your second? All in favor of it?